Okay, it's seven o'clock. If everyone will quiet down, Kim, are you ready? Okay. Everyone, would you please quiet down? It's seven o'clock and we're going to start our meeting. We got two public hearings tonight. And the first one is on our BioGas project. Kim, will you read the notice?
Notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Town of Batavia Planning Board regarding an application for a special use permit by Genesee BioGas LLC to construct and operate a renewable gas facility consisting of two digesters, a gas storage tank, and associated equipment for the purpose of digesting organic waste to produce renewable natural gas and/or electricity and heat. A utility core consisting of waste four main lines, electrical lines, and water lines will run from each of the main waste stream plants, i.e. Owhaka, Hood, etc., to this facility. A small portion of the waste stream will be received by truck delivery. The facility will consist of a series of tanks, infrastructure, heat exchangers, and buildings including an 18,000 square foot receiving and unloading building. A new commercial driveway is proposed to West Ag Park Drive. This is located in the Genesee Valley Agricultural Business Park, tax map number 20-1-108. Said hearing will be held on Tuesday, May 7, at the Town Hall at 7:00 PM, at which time all interested persons will be heard. Written comments will be accepted prior to that date. You may email the chairman at kjazinski@townofbatavia.com or text 219-9190. By order of the Town of Batavia Planning Board, Kathleen Jazinski, Chairman.
Now, is there anyone here that is new to this project and would like a presentation? We have people available to do this. This is on the BioGas public hearing. Just raise your hand if you want a presentation. We are prepared.
I'm new to it, so I'd like to hear it.
You would like to hear it?
Yes.
Okay, would someone from Batavia? Yeah, we've got that hooked up, I hope. When people stand in the back, we don't hear them as well.
No problem. Can you hear me now? Or do I need to pick it up?
Pick it up.
Okay, thank you. So I'm with CH4 BioGas. We own an anaerobic digester that handles-
I'm not sure it's on.
Is it on?
I don't think it's on.
It's not, huh?
It should be a lot longer than that.
Face this way and I can hear you when I read your lips.
Hello?
It is on. You just said it's on. You gotta raise it up.
It's just quiet.
I'm just quiet.
Okay, I guess you'll just have to speak up.
Okay, I'll try again. My name is Lauren Toretta. I'm with CH4 BioGas. We own a commercial scale anaerobic digester in Wyoming County. We handle manure and food processing waste from the dairy cooperatives. And we're taking waste from the Ag Park and bringing it down to our Synergy BioGas plant. The idea is to build the same BioGas plant, but closer to the Ag Park tenants so that we won't have to drive the waste down to Synergy. We can handle them and process them. There's the volume. We can handle and process the waste closer to the facilities themselves. And it's a contained facility. And we extract the gas and use it as an offset to natural gas. So it's a very environmentally and economically beneficial project. Thank you.
All right, now, this is a public hearing. The Planning Board is here to take your comments on the project. So I would ask anyone that wishes to speak on the BioGas project to go to the podium. And you don't have to give your name anymore. You could just say you, if you want to, you can. You can give your address. It will be entirely up to you. We'd appreciate if you come to the podium. So hopefully, we can hear. That's what this is about. Sir, did you want to make a comment?
No.
You don't. Does anyone? Well, why don't I leave this open for a few minutes? When we issue the notice of public hearing, we tell people they can also email or write to us or other ways of letting us know what they're interested in. So I got one from, actually, I got two from neighboring property owners. And both of them are requesting more information. This has been forwarded to the engineers. And they will both get answers to their questions.
Kathy, just to answer that, either they can stop and look at all the materials at the Town Hall or they would have to go through the foil process. Unfortunately, that's the only way we can distribute it.
I do tell them that, but because it was so close to the hearing date, they wanted information quick.
Yeah, unfortunately, we can't.
So I thought maybe we could email it or something. But I realize how busy you are in it.
Well, no, unfortunately, we can't.
You can't, okay.
Correct.
Oh.
But it is available here.
Tell people they can get it.
It is available here. If anybody wants to stop in person or they can fill out the foil request, and then we can send it to them. And that would be done at the town clerk's office.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, we all know that. Thank you.
And if anybody has any questions, they can see me after the meeting. Or Matt.
And you've got BioGas. You just BioGas, right? Oh, you just said that, okay. Okay, that's the only letters I have regarding this. No one else is present nor wishes to speak on this. Okay, then I'm going to close this hearing. Someone does? Oh, yes, sir.
My name is Wayne Nichols. I own the property that's on the east side of this potential project. I'm concerned about the smell. And I think the neighbors that live down on the Batavia-Staффord Town Line Road have the same problem with this. I tried to research this before this meeting. Found absolutely nothing. I got a letter about the, or about the notice that I had already received. That's the only information I have come up with on this project. I'm very concerned. I've worked in ag industry for 70 years. And you're saying this is a confined system. There's no such thing as a confined system. If you go over to Synergy in Wyoming County, it does smell. There are certain times when they're burning off excess gas and when they're shipping it. You know, they unload these pits. It does smell. And I'm concerned about my neighbors also. Fortunately, I don't live there. It's just an agricultural property at the present time. But on the master plan, there is a potential road that's going to run down through there, over to the Batavia-Staффord Town Line Road at some time. And they were talking about selling parcels off either side. It could be a development of some sort. This thing is going to throw a real blind, you know, ointment, I'll tell you. It's not as clean as we think. There are some times when I come in Elica Street into Batavia, if the wind is out of the east, you get down by the old Sylvania Plant. And the smell coming from Owhaka is putrid. It stinks. And these same people are smelling that sometimes over, when the wind is out of the west, they smell it over on the Town Line Road. So I can't understand why this isn't being put out somewhere similar to Synergy. Get it away from the city. One question I have is, what are they bringing in? Are they bringing in liquid manure to work in this digester? What is the outside stuff that's being brought in?
It's predominantly waste from Hood and upstate Niagara.
But it says in here that they're going to ship it in by truck.
A small portion will come from outside of the Ag Park. Until, unless the Ag Park closes, then 100% of it will be upstate Niagara and Hood.
And this is a different plant than is at Synergy? This will have Camel fittings and a different air system, and it will be confined? Synergy is very different than this one.
Synergy uses liquid manure.
That's right.
Right.
And this one won't?
None whatsoever.
I would suggest you call the Town Hall and see if they'll sit down with one of the staff and reviewing it. We have a lot of information on it. And it's still moving along.
Not that it has been shared with us.
Well, it's been on the Batavian, the daily news. Our meetings are recorded and open to the public.
You have access to these meetings on their website. You can go to links and watch.
Yeah, you can go back and look at them if you'd like. And our staff will be happy to sit and explain it to you.
I question the smell. That is my only-
That's a good question. And that's something that we're working on.
George Forsyte, when he was alive, he approached us about buying some of our land there to put one of these up. And I was, it devaluates our property. It's going to. I mean, nobody's going to want to build anything anywhere near a BioGas. That's all. I have a real problem with that.
Thank you for sharing that with us. We will take note. And we're still working on the project.
When are we going to see some plans of some sort?
Well, the plans are all, have all been given to us in an application. It's gone through county planning. It's been in the news quite a lot.
It hasn't been on-
Maybe the name didn't catch you or something, but it's been pretty well advertised.
I follow the Batavian pretty close, but I haven't seen anything on there.
All of our press does a good job. But the staff will gladly work with you.
Thank you.
Don't wait too long. We're gonna call.
It seems like it's moved ahead very fast.
Well, it is taking steps. And in order to, we need all the information we can get before we can go to the next step, which would be the secret, the environmental review. And that's where the odor and the noise and things like that take place. Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else on BioGas? Okay, I'll go back to my little statement here. Okay, I'd like to close the public hearing except for any comments or response on behalf of BioGas to address any comments or questions from the Planning Board, Town Engineer, Town Attorney, or other staff. It seems reasonable to answer the questions afterwards. So if you have questions, don't be afraid to give them to us, okay? Thank you. I'm going to call this here. Did you want something? Oh, okay. I'm going to call this hearing closed. And I thank you for attending and giving us your comments. Okay, well, we're on schedule, 7:15. We have a second public hearing. And will you read that notice, Kim?
Notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Town of Batavia Planning Board regarding an application for a special use permit by East Coast Speedway, Jason Bonziori, to open and operate a racing track on property that was former Polar Wave at 3500 Harlock Road, Batavia, New York, tax map 151. This is a commercial recreation district. Said hearing will be held on Tuesday, May 7, 2024, at the Town Hall at 7:15 PM, at which time all interested persons will be heard. Written comments will be accepted prior to that date. You may email the chairman at kjazinski@townofbatavia.com or text 219-919190. By order of the Town of Batavia Planning Board, Kathleen Jazinski, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. This public hearing will be run the same as the other one. People that have comments will give them. We aren't supposed to answer questions because we're just working on this, and we don't have the answers to everything yet. So we don't want to give wrong information out. Jason, are you here?
Yep.
Okay, would you like to make a short presentation?
Sure.
And this will be on the latest plan that you have.
Okay.
Okay.
Want me to use the microphone again?
If you can, it'll help us.
Testing. Okay. Hi, my name's Jason Bonziori. I'm from Rochester. I've owned and operated multiple racetracks throughout New York State, including at the Polar Wave previously for a lot of years. It's my 28th season promoting. And we are looking to reopen the Polar Wave property and just do the same exact operation that we had there back in 2005 for approximately eight or 10 years. I think we had a real good track record there. Kathy was on the board then and had written us a nice letter for another project that I had done, saying that we had done a good job and didn't have any issues out here. And it's a family-friendly sport. We're trying to fill a niche for guys and girls and people of all ages that are enthusiasts and competitors of those disciplines that have lost tracks locally to race at. Paradise Speedway in Geneva closed two years ago. They were trying to do a go-karting track at the fairgrounds here in Genesee that they closed last August. So there's really not an opportunity for a lot of enthusiasts to have things locally. So a very good friend of ours, a family friend for years that's been a racer and promoter, purchased the property and purchased the Kelly's Motorsports property next door, too, and has done a great job of beginning to clean both properties up and asked us if we should come back out there and operate in the tracks again. And we were, I guess, at the right time in our lives here to be able to go back and do it. So we're asking for some support. And it seems like the support within the racing community has been great for it so far.
Thank you. Now, anyone that would like to count up? Would you come up to the podium, please, and try using the microphone?
I'll leave it on. Yeah, I'd like to comment.
You'll have to bear with me. I failed public speaking, so I apologize. I support Jason 100%. So my name's Justin Fagan. My family owns the property surrounding Kelly's and Polar Wave property. The original track that was ran for 10 years was actually across our property line by 20 to 30 feet. They've had GPS surveys that shows it clearly. I want to support Jason. I want him to be able to do what he's doing. I raced on his track before. He's a good businessman. He does a great job. I just hope that the property lines are acknowledged and those are shared with us as plans. So that's all I've got. So as this progresses, I hope I'm involved with it. And my family wanted to come out here, so they asked me to come out. So the property lines, I have site maps and stuff like that. The racetrack originally does cross our property line by about 30 to 40 feet. And if they bumped it back inside the property lines, I would hope there's some crash protection or something so people don't go flying over the property lines of that nature. So if Jason knows the property lines, he can agree we'll work together on it.
Yeah, I didn't build that track, as you know. But yeah, I'm very well aware of it. And we did make sure on the new surveys that we've got it moved in for it.
Yeah, so-
Totally supportive of that.
There's crash protection. You know, our lawyers sent me cease and dismiss letters on the original track. It's kind of hard to get through things. My lawyer's still working on it. I don't want to hold him up at all. I want him to be successful. I believe in what he's doing 100%. I just, my lawyer strongly advised that I come to this meeting and I mention the property lines. And, you know, they are within years of that track ran on our property. So I'm not going to hold him up. I've already helped him clean the track up that he's working on.
No, I appreciate it.
And I've added my own type of equipment, a volunteer time. I just wanted to be heard that. So hopefully, we observe the property lines this time. We don't have to go through lawyers and things like that. And whatever he needs, I'll help him with it. I'll promote him and all that things. I just, he's going to do a great job. He's obviously a businessman. I just hope that we don't have to screw around with the lawyers this time.
Do you live near where the track will be?
I live a mile that way. The track's going on the thruway. I own behind Kelly's Motor Speedway. I own behind Polar Wave. And I own to the east end of Polar Wave. So I cover them on three corners. And the front would be the road, obviously. So I just, you know what I mean? For years, that track clearly crossed the property line. There's no arguing it. And it got approved before that way without the right survey. And I do not want to see that happen again because, you know, my lawyers were all over us and my family. My family's elderly. They couldn't come in today. So they asked me to come and represent them. On this tax map, it shows Richard Bauer. He's passed away seven or eight years. We're working through the estate right now with a local lawyer. But I was asked to speak on the property. So just wanted to come out there. It's pretty hard to sell a property with these issues down the road if we decide to sell. So I appreciate it, and thank you guys very much.
Thank you for coming.
I do have a question. Is it going to be only go-karts?
No, it'll be-
I can't hear you.
The mic's on. You just got to-
Oh, it wasn't.
It wasn't.
Yeah, I wondered, well, I talk about it anyway. Is it only go-karts?
No, the primary thing would be motorcycles again, like it was before, but the carts would be in.
Because you can get that information from the application.
Well, I just wondered.
Just make your statements today, please.
Yeah, well, that was my one question. My statements, first of all, there's only one way in and out of there. And with Area 51, I live on Chelsea Road. Area 51 is basically right behind me. It says here that there are, the dense woods will muffle the noise. I hear the announcer, but he's in my backyard. Ryder 27 is ready to greet the track at like 7:30 in the morning. Memberships are sold at Area 51, so there's noise every day, all day. We live in the country for peace and quiet, and we get none. And like you, you say you can contain the race area, but you cannot contain the noise. And if the wind is just right, even with our windows and doors closed, we have got to turn the TV up to hear it. And it's, it was said that they were going to run the same hours that Area 51 is. That's every day.
No, it wasn't said at all.
Well, somebody had said that it would, there were, you would run the hours of Area 51.
No, it's not even-
Don't answer questions.
But my concern, my concern is, are we, the traffic is atrocious from Area 51. How much more will we have from this? How much more noise will we have from this? Our property values have decreased because of this. No one, people want to live in the country for peace and quiet. There isn't. No one's going to want to buy the properties with that noise all, every day, basically because of the way the track is. It just comes right across. We can't even enjoy it from portions. So that's my concern. That basically the increase in traffic, how much more will we get from this? How much more noise? I thought it was just go-karts. I was not aware there were going to be other dirt bikes there. So I guess that's just our main concern right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I have to agree with that lady there. I live on the Lewiston Road, just south of Galloway. And if I'm outside on an afternoon, you swear to God, they're right next to me. It's louder than when my kids mow my yard. And I'm sitting outside. And unless you're going to have a time limit with the noise and that, I think people around my area will have a big problem with it. That's basically all I got to say about it.
Noise will be addressed.
It's the noise. But the last time, pardon me, last time the noise was supposed to, supposed to have been addressed, I think it was even louder. Because when the wind blown right, I can tell you what the guy's saying on the microphone. And like I said, if you go by the way the crow flies, I might be two miles away. And I'm on the Lewiston Road. And I hate to call the cops and says, you got to have a noise ordinance. So you got to have a time limit, when they can run and when they can't run.
Well, you do have to have a noise ordinance, but you also have to use some common sense.
You're right, right. A lot of time-wise and things like that, I understand.
That's what we're here to help you with.
But I don't want to be outside 9:00 at night and listen to a bunch of motorcycles, dirt bikes, whatever you want to run at 9:00 at night, when I want to sit outside at night.
Yeah, we don't want you to either.
Because then, but like I said, I've had them come up to me complaining about, I'm making too damn much noise. And if they can do it to me, I'm going to turn them out. I'm going to stop pushing. And then we'll see, I'll see what I can go after that. And just to make it clear, I don't shoot my mouth off. And when I say something, I go ahead and do it. And I'm giving an example. I had a lawyer that tried to roll me out of Orleans. Guess what happened after a couple of years? He lost his license. He cannot practice in New York State now. And I'm keeping track of it. So it's just a thing. I don't want to listen to it when I'm outside in the evening. If it's daytime and I'm cutting grass, I couldn't care less what people do. But when I want to sit out there on a quiet evening and I listen to all that noise, and I know how far away it is. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Zachary Walsh. I've been around racing since I was knee-high. It's a family sport. And like Jason said, all the car tracks closed around. And it's a good way to get kids into racing and not have them out causing ruckus around town, riding dirt bikes on the road, down the road. It's, you know, I think it's beneficial. Go-karts aren't that loud. I'm sure Jason could work something out with the Speedway bikes where they're not running to 10:00 at night. I mean, Speedway bikes are louder than the go-karts. I don't really see the go-karts being that loud. I mean, you might run 14 of them at a time at most. Same with Speedway bikes. I don't think there's as many of them as there is dirt bikes on the track. At once, yeah, there's like four Speedway bikes at a time. So the noise will be way quieter. I mean, there's still going to be noise. But like I said, you know, we got to do, there's nothing in this town for kids to do anymore, really, you know, like, other than to go race or if they're not on the racetrack racing, they're going down the road and causing ruckus and vandalizing stuff and playing video games and not being kids, you know? Like, I think it's, I think it's a good thing. There's a handful of us that have to drive two hours one way to go race nowadays. That's basically it, you know? We're driving four hours on a Friday night after we all got done working to go race. Or on a Saturday, we're driving, same thing, another two, three hours one way to go race. I think it'll bring a lot of people into the town, tax money. The Speedway bikes are honestly entertaining. They're pretty crazy, like, not noise-wise, but like to watch them race and what they do. And I just think we need more stuff in this town for kids to do nowadays, you know? Let kids be kids, like. I mean, I know they got sports to play and stuff like that, but racing's a family sport. And, you know, it keeps a lot of kids out of trouble. It kept me out of trouble as a kid. And that's basically all I got to say.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Mike. So I'm definitely supportive of the racetrack, too, to go on to what he said about timing and stuff. When our kids get out of school at 2:30, we get out of work at 4:00, and they got to drive another two hours to make it to a go-kart track for our kids to be able to race and have fun. Sometimes it's just not feasible. My son just turned 16. A lot of his friends that race are somewhere around that age. We're all dare-doubles at that age. We all want to do something, that's adrenaline. We'd rather have our kids out on the track racing each other or race something down the streets and the back roads. That happens, we see it happen all the time. So I mean, that gives them somewhere to have their little adrenaline rush race and have fun. We have every, all kinds of stuff that makes noise. Excuse me. But most of it's aimed towards kids. It's for something them to do out here. They don't have much to do. Another big thing that comes with this year is with, due to any kind of racing, you got to have sponsors. I can't come eat $10,000 out of my pocket to let my kid do something he enjoys. So when we go around and my kid's looking for sponsors, I'm asking Batavia for a sponsor to be able to race two, three hours away for a local business. That's not feasible for them to sponsor me because who's going to come from three hours away when I get local restaurants or local companies to sponsor me? Their name's going to be seen in the town that their business is located. So I mean, it helps with sponsors. It helps kids have fun.[1754.81] It's, I think it's more oriented towards kids and youth for something to do. I mean, there's gonna be adults there too, but same thing with, it's a spectator sport, you're gonna get spectators. You're gonna bring noise in with almost any event you run. We do the Airshow in Batavia. We do the races at the fairgrounds, we do the demolition herbies. You're gonna get noise, you're gonna get rowdy people sooner or later. It happens at the downs, it happens no matter where your stuff. But if that gives somewhere for the kids to have fun and not be on the streets or out, doing anything else, it's a good idea to have something like that in town. And the travel is the biggest thing. We have such a big go-kart community around here that we all gotta get together and travel three hours and there's a whole. It's so much easier when we have something local. Then, like I said, with sponsors, two local businesses support us 100% to put their names on a vehicle and be able to race in the town that businesses. So, that's all I got.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Jeffrey Longan. I actually live in the town of Wyoming, but we, me and my son and family all race go-karts together. Went to the point of putting a go-kart track in at my own house. It's not like a professional track, but I think with having a track here in the city of Batavia like we had before and at the fairgrounds, would really help bring local community together. I know there's a lot of racers in the community themselves. And like all of my friends have said, we, we all travel two hours almost every weekend to race. You know, just one way. Either Wellsville, Leedsport. And, you know, me myself, I'd rather be bringing that money to this community than bringing it to other communities. But with, you know, no local tracks in the area that, you know, provide access for go-karts, it's really tough for us. Like I said, we've only been racing like two years, but my, my son came to me one day and just said, "Hey, let's race go-karts." You know, I wasn't a racer, I never was into it before. And it was all him, it was, it was all him pushing me to, you know, do something. So, it just shows how much of a family-oriented sport it really is. You know, when your son can push you to do it. And now I'm actually racing go-karts myself. I said, like Mike said over there, same with the sponsorships. It's really hard for us to get sponsorships for our go-karts when the tracks that we run are so far away. You know, like you said, nobody wants to sponsor somebody that's not racing in your local community. And for us to try to get sponsors down in Leedsport or Wellsville or wherever we're racing, it's, you know, unfortunate for us, cause we can't really support those businesses because we're not really local to that area. So, yes, I guess that's about all I got to say, you know. Hope everything, you know, as far as the sound goes, go-karts are really not that loud. I don't know about the bikes, I really haven't seen them. But I race my go-karts right in the town village of Wyoming and we haven't gotten one complaint yet. And there's a lot of people, elderly people in the village that would probably complain if it was a problem. So, I feel like the area that you're trying to put it in is probably the best area. It's outside of the village, it's not right, right in town. Yes, I get that there's gonna be a few people that are in the area that are affected by the noise. Most of the races are done, you know, by 10 o'clock, you know. I think that, you know, I don't know what the town ordinance is for noise. But 10 o'clock doesn't seem too unreasonable for races. I know Jesse went a lot later than that sometimes, so. Guess that's all I got to say. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, we did get some letters. A couple came to the planning board, not to be read at the meeting. I have one here from Mr. Neerhood that he wanted us to know that sportsmanship is taken very seriously by the racing people and he would like to start his daughter on carts. You have to go over an hour a day to race on dirt. He supports the kart track. Brittany, you have something to read?
I do, I have a letter from John, I think it's Mawsher or Mawsher?
Mawsher.
Mawsher. The town of Batavia has been faced with a contentious issue regarding the potential opening and operation of a racing track by East Coast Speedway. This proposal has sparked debate among residents, community leaders, and racing enthusiasts about whether or not the town should allow the track to be built. Historically, the town of Batavia has not been known for hosting racing events. However, as popularity of motorsports has grown in recent years, there has been an increased demand for racing tracks in this area. The proposal to open East Coast Speedway has brought this issue to the forefront and has divided the community on whether or not it is a positive development for the town. The opening of a racetrack in the town of Batavia could provide a much-needed recreational outlet for families and children in the area. Racing events would offer a unique form of entertainment and create opportunities for community members to come together and enjoy the thrill of competition. Additionally, the economic benefits of hosting racing events could boost local businesses and support job growth in the region. Influential individuals who have contributed to the field of, the field of allowing East Coast Speedway to open and operate a racing track include local business owners who see the potential for increased revenue, racing enthusiasts who are passionate about the sport, and town officials who must weigh the pros and cons of the proposal. These individuals have played a significant role in shaping the debate and influencing public opinion on the matter. The track would create job opportunities, attract visitors from out of town, and stimulate local businesses. Additionally, it would provide a recreational outlet for racing enthusiasts and could lead to the development of a vibrant motorsports community in the area.
Thank you. So, that's what we have so far. If anyone else would like to add to it. This isn't the end, it's only the beginning. So, now that we've taken your comments, we appreciate it. If you contact us in the same manner, or you could just come to the town hall. Just let us know if you have anything that you have not heard tonight that you want us to take into consideration.
Kathy, is it okay to say one, step up one more time, or do I just give once?
If you got something new.
I think it would just help the situation a little bit. The only opposition that I've heard was just from a few residents that were nearby about noise and concerns that it's gonna be similar to Area 51. I just wanna reassure you that it is an entirely different operation in Area 51. The motocross races are openly advertising seven days a week on his website. It is, there's a lot more competitors involved in it. There's 24 riders at one time going around the track in a course that is probably six or seven acres long. You know, ambulances come out constantly because it's pretty dangerous and kids are jumping huge jumps and there's a lot of injuries. We've got an excellent track record for safety. It's a, it's a small oval track. Our motorcycles are four-stroke engines, they're much quieter than pipey two-strokes. The carts are very quiet. We've done this already in town at the same property with, I don't think any complaints. Very good track record. It's just a, probably a one-night-a-week practice and Friday night racing that'll conclude by 11:00 PM. Possibly a few Saturday specials, but not a seven-day-a-week operation. This isn't gonna be constant noise in your backyard. This road has hosted racing for 70 years now on three different properties that had racetracks, including, you know, the Polarway that had two racetracks for 15 years there and hosted national events. So, I just wanna reassure you that it's an entirely different beast than motocross racing. We have, you know, at the most, sometimes six or eight competitors on a small oval course for two-minute intervals with, like I said, dense woods at the back, racetracks on both sides of us, and the New York State thruway running through our front yard. So, I think it's very reasonable to ask for this. And it's the right location. It's been designated as the Area Four Racing in Batavia. And it's hosted racing for 70 years and with multiple tracks, you know. So, I just wanted to make sure that there was a, some different, you know, that people understood the difference between the disciplines.
Thank you. And anyone that wants to know more details can come to the town and sit down and look at the application and where we are right now.
Is there a site plan, is there a site plan on the application right now? Like how it lays out on the property versus the property lines?
Steve, you've got the site plan?
Yeah. Yeah, there's one at the town hall.
So, you guys have the original track, not that site plan?
The revised one, I'm not sure if it shows the original or not. But it shows the proposed.
Okay, so you're all welcome. I will close the public hearing, but that's, it's nowhere near closed. We'll be, we'll be working on this. The agendas for our meetings are posted on our website. And you can call the town hall, you can call me. I put my number on everything, so somebody, someone can reach me. And don't be afraid to ask questions. And if it's something new, we really wanna hear it. So, thank you very much for coming. One last chance, anyone have anything to say? Thank you, our meeting is closed at, what is it, at 7:30? 40?
7:40.
7:40. Okay, we're gonna go into our regular planning board meeting now. Unless, anyone during the board, did we miss anything? Everybody set? Okay. Okay, I've called a meeting to order. Well, you, anyone here to drink or anything? You set meeting?
I do.
Yeah, I just, like my word, call me.
Okay, I've called a meeting to order. I'm standing in front of the class. Go call please, Kim.
Paul Marquesi.
Here.
Paul McCullough.
Here.
Tom Cartridge.
Here.
Jonathan Long.
Here.
Steve Tanner. Brooks Holly.
Here.
Brittany Whitcock.
Here.
Mike Dana.
Here.
Kathy.
Here. Mike, Dan will be voting tonight in place of Steve Tanner if we take any action. I don't know that there'll be any action taken tonight. Did everyone look at the minutes from April 16th?
Motion for approval.
Motion from John.
Second.
Seconded by Mike. Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now, this is a timeline or agenda where we receive comments on anything on the agenda. We have a very short one today and it has to do with Burnberry Stores. Is anyone here that wants to make a comment on, on the agenda item? I don't do that. Okay, well, let's go to the first item on the agenda, which is the review of the changes made to the site plan. Christian Brunel is here and he's going to update us with the traffic study and micros and all the questions we have.
Do you mind wanting to set easel, or can I just use a chair? It's up to you guys.
Can everybody see that? We can, we have it.
I like to do a lot of pointing, you guys, you guys know.
It was, I'll deliver to us on Friday. Thank you for that.
Yeah, I'll do a little pointing, but I-
Okay.
Okay, good evening. Christian Brunel, Senior Executive Vice President of Burnberry. Thanks for having me tonight, allowing me to update you. As you guys know, I was in front of you guys, I believe, on March 5th. Wanted to update you since what's progressed in the last two months. On the county, went to the county planning board on March 14th. I attended the meeting myself. Unfortunately, there was no quorum. There was not enough members that night. So, they passed it back to you guys locally. There was some concern afterwards that went public. And I think it was made, it was brought to this board, to you Kathy at one point in regards to positioning of the, of the building and whatnot. So, we decided, the town and myself decided to have a meeting with the director of county planning, which we did that on March 28th. We sat down, came down here, sat down, looked at the site plan. We all put our brains together. A lot of it had to do with, is walkability and whatnot of the zoning of the area being new. And so, we decided to move a few things out of the site plan, which I'll go over in a minute, to make the county director, you know, some thoughts that he had had. And I think we all came to an agreement. So, I did receive, it was resubmitted to the director of planning, the county director of planning afterwards, to him, submitted to the town officials as well, engineering and other people here. And on April 23rd, I did get an email back. And I don't know if you were copied on it, Kathy, or the board members were, from Felipe. The emails basically stated, it's right here. I can't speak to the county planning board or for the town, but the revised site plan addresses our department's major concerns. Okay? So, and I'll go over those. So, he's saying it didn't go back to the county, however, it did address his concerns and others' major concerns. But again, they had to do with walkability, positioning the building. He did mention in this quick email, Tom, Dan, and Steve were all copied on it, the need for street trees, which I don't disagree with. Okay, but the general thing is, he was happy with the plan now, before he was not happy with the position of the building. So, I will go over the changes. So, that's where we, up to date there, sort of changes. I'm going to do a little pointing, but you guys have them there. So, the biggest change here is we moved the building. The other building used to be, actually, this is the old site plan. I kinda cut it over here and showed you guys, this is the old site plan. This is the new site plan. What changed? This building has been shifted to the south, okay? Towards the Rumsey Road, or I call it the future road, but I think its proper name is Rumsey. I didn't learn that last meeting. So, it's shifted over here tight to here. And again, the reason they did that, they thought of walkability. If anything happens in phase three or four of the project, which is supposed to be apartments, multifamilies, that there'll be a walkability access coming from this direction. Okay?
That will never happen.
I did make that comment, it was made out there, that'll never happen. But so, there is a future sidewalk, I also have shown right here. Where that goes to, I really don't know. I just, I'll put it in. If somebody connects to it, so be it. They did ask again about walkability and that seems to be the big thing the county has. So, I said, listen, I'll do my part and put a sidewalk to there. So, I stuffed it there, if anyone grabs it, they grab it. But it will be there, that's shown on the plan. Okay, again, for the walkability. So, we moved it, you can see. So, there used to be all these parking spaces here. So, basically, we just took those parking spaces, lost those, and put them along this area over here. Okay? We didn't lose any parking spaces, actually turned out better for us. So, we did that. Doing that, the walkability, we also, right here, this gray area, you can see the three little black dots, are picnic tables. Okay, everyone know, maybe you don't, but Burnberry is very famous for soft ice cream. Eating a dipping ice cream, ice cream window for kids, for baseball teams, sporting events and whatnot. So, we felt again, for the walkability, in the future, we would have picnic tables in the concrete patio here. That'll be the porch, okay? We have a covered porch here, but we also extended this right along the property line. So, anyone in the future, again, walking down this sidewalk or whatever, can cross right here and can cross right onto the patio without going in front of this curb cut, which is gonna be where the fuel is. Okay, it kinda separates the two. Okay, again, they thought that, again, kinda seating area, right, more pedestrian friendly. Future sidewalk, I covered that. We moved the stormwater, you can see the stormwater right here was out front. I think there was a comment before. Again, like I had said before to the board, this was so conceptual, I was just trying to get some feedback. We have now moved the stormwater behind the store to the east. What that does as well, there is the stormwater, there is an easement between tractor supply and I've been talking to their engineer, my engineers have been talking to theirs, nonstop. So, there's a connection that can be made here, okay? In regard to the SWIP. So, these two stormwater areas will act as overflow. Ours will act as an overflow to theirs. So, that kinda makes sense. Again, that took it from very visible to kinda behind the store. Okay, so that moved. We also moved, before, the berm over here, next to the perch, was a church, was a raised berm that they had talked about that they wanted. That was over the top of a 10-foot sewer easement. And I had agreed with tractor supply. Once they put the sewer line in, if something ever happened to it, I would, you know, they would dig my berm up, dig the trees, and I would respond, you know, plant them. Not a big deal for me. However, with the new site plan, by shifting everything to the south, I can move the berm, which still does the same effect for the church members. I can move the berm off of that easement and to the south. Same berm, actually more trees, I curled them around here. Same berm, same trees, again, whatnot, I just was able to get it off of the easement, which made sense. Also, the county had talked about dressing. You know, we go back and forth what the front is, which I still don't know what the front is. Somebody wants the front to be here, but this is the front. So, they talked about a white, kind of a greeting fence, cause it is kind of agriculture out there. So they talked about a white, kind of a greeting fence, because it is kind of agricultural out there. So, in your, I have a packet here I can hand out, or you can hand it out, but, uh, so what we did is they thought of a kind of a, I thought of a split rail, or, you know, I like to use split rail, but they kind of wanted a white agricultural fence. So you can see right in your plan, right along Route sixty-three here, okay? Kind of the corridor, we're gonna have a nice little white, right? Just kind of, yeah. Yeah, like, they call it agricultural horse, call it whatever you may want. But again, that's what's gonna kind of come down sixty-three. You know, you see that in the front, kind of gives a feel. Kind of fits with our farm market type store as well. So I think that was a, a good touch. That is on here. I do have copies of the board numbers on it, where I can hand them out next time. But you can see, it's a pretty straightforward, white vinyl agricultural fence. Signs. We had talked about, we wanted our own freestanding sign, as I had mentioned before. However, the board had said they would like one sign. Okay, I talked to Tractor Supply. I told the board that I literally found out that they had an easement on the property that I was buying, that I didn't know about until, like, the day before the board, which is in this corner right here. It says future easement. So what I did is I coordinated with, again, that's in, and I'll hand these out, just so you guys have them for the next meeting, so that's what I'm with me. The new sign details and fence details are right in here. You guys might as well have them. Just want to pass them out there.
Yeah.
Oops, I'm sorry.
Anybody got one?
Yeah. Okay, so for the sign is, again, so now we have agreed for one, and I think this was the board wanted. Instead of two freestanding signs on one lot, it would have been kind of confusing. So we're proposing taking our sign, combining with theirs, which does meet your code, uh, and placing it right in the future easement area, which is in this front corner where it was before. This is what the sign would look like. You can see it's the Tractor Supply kind of sign, and it's our sign. Okay? It, it's twenty-six feet high. Your zone head leaves a lot of thirty-five feet high.
And are you happy with that? Pretty much?
Am I happy? Yeah.
It's nice that you coordinated with them.
Yeah, no, it's fine. It'll work. I think it works both of our needs.
Yeah.
And I do understand the reasoning. Two freestanding signs would kind of deter from it. And it fits in the easement. Uh, you know, it's just a shared maintenance thing, which is kind of a pain for me, but I'll, I'll deal with it. Uh, but that's the sign. Uh, that is in your packet, again, underneath signage towards the rear, all the dimensions there. Okay, uh, traffic. So there was a traffic. I had given my trip generation numbers to Steve and the town. They had asked for them. Part of the mitigation requirement with the New York State DOT. Uh, I submitted my trip gen, uh, numbers from my traffic engineer. They passed them on to Pasero. Pasero has come back with a rough draft. I don't know if it's final yet, but basically, they're recommending a left-hand turn coming on a southbound line from Route sixty-three into this project. So, basically, anyone coming from, was Oakville up there, uh, coming down this road here, they want us or someone, I'm not saying us, to put a left-hand turn into Rumsey Road. Okay? That's what their recommendation is going to be. Yeah, just a left-handed turn dedicated line. Uh, I am in discussion with Hicks, Estetaker, right now. I spoke to them. I've spoke to the town briefly about it. I have not agreed to it, to be perfectly honest with you. It's very, very expensive. Uh, and again, me and Hicks are in talks right now about that. Okay, uh, so, but, that is gonna be a requirement. I understand that. Uh, it has not been sent to the DOT, correct? Yeah, the New York State DOT?
Correct, still draft form.
Still draft form, but when it gets sent to them, it gets sent to them. We all know what they're gonna do. They're not gonna say, no, don't put a left turn lane, and they're gonna say, go ahead and put a left turn lane. So, again, that being said, I'll keep the board updated as we progress. Uh, but right now, uh, me and Hicks and Stetaker have had several in-depth conversations about this. Okay, about that left turn lane, you know, and, and who's responsible and who's not, whatnot. Uh, but, that's what has to be done. It's either, you know, you're gonna do it or you're not gonna do it. Problem is, and like I told, uh, Mr. Hicks and others, is whoever goes there apparently, that's, you know, what's gonna be, have to go there. You know, and in the future, we, Steve, we talked about future mitigation at this corner, but that lot is either gonna sit there vacant with no lines, and just a Tractor Supply, or somebody's gonna buck up and, uh, you know, spend some money and put a significant left turn lane in there. Okay? Uh, but that's the update. That's where I'm staying with it. I don't know when they're gonna submit it to the New York State DOT. That's up to you guys. And I will keep them abreast of my conversation with Hicks as well. Everyone knows they've started the project. So by doing this, these changes, moving the building closer to the south, okay? Because your definition of corner lot refers you to, uh, the front lot line, and if you look at the definition, definition of your front lot line in your code, uh, it said, in the case of a lot abutting more than one street, each street line shall be considered a front line. So by doing that, you create two front sets, two front yards. Okay? Uh, one along sixty-three and one along here. So by shifting the building to the south, per the county's recommendation, uh, and the canopy to the south, that has created the need for two area variances. Okay, from the zoning board of appeals. Uh, those area variances, you're required for a front yard setback is fifty feet. Okay? The one for the building right here, you can see, it's very close to the property line, again, but that was by design, right, for pedestrian friendly. Uh, that's gonna be eleven, proposed eleven feet off the property line, so we would need a relief of thirty-nine feet. Uh, the fuel canopy, right here, the white, okay? Needs to be fifty. That is currently forty-three, so we need a relief of seven feet there. We have applied to the ZBA. Uh, we were told that it has to wait county as well. Uh, correct?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it is, uh, I believe it's already been forwarded over, if not, but they won't be able to take action till the June meeting.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, but that varies. Request, again, is at the county. I'm just assuming, because the county really pushed us to this situation, that they would support the area variance. Okay, uh, so, but again, as soon as we get the county comments back, then I'll be in a position to go in front of the ZBA board and request an actual, two, two area variances for a front yard. Okay? That is the update.
Hey, any questions from the board?
Yeah, I guess, I guess my question is, when we originally talked to you, we asked for a design with a fuel farm in the back. And, um, it's become quite obvious that it was ignored. And, and I want to know why, why that wasn't at least considered.
I, I don't think this board asked for a fuel.
Oh, we did. In fact.
That could, no, they did not. The county, the county did. The county.
We, we talked about it.
Yeah, but you did not ask for it. The county asked for it. And I made, I think I made the comment that if the fuel pumps go behind the store, there is no project.
You did.
I know for a fact I did. So, and I told the county that. Steve was like, I was holding no punches from anyone when I went to the county. I'm like, what can we do to mitigate? That's why, you know, it's, what I try to do is mitigate. And I said, the pumps can't go behind the store from a, the economic business standpoint. There's, this can't do it. And that was, I, I didn't think that was this board. I thought that was directly, directly driven from comments from the county planning board.
The county planning board sent me an email, and I forwarded it to you, and we discussed it at our meeting.
Yes, yep. So, but that's why I had this, just being totally honest with you, so. This, I thought this was.
How does it change the economics? I, I don't understand.
People have to understand there's fuel in front of it. We still consider this to run sixty.
You don't have a sign that's twenty-six feet up with a burn dairy and a three dollar and fifty-nine cent fuel and member price and non-member price. So would that not indicate that you have fuel on, on the property?
For some people driving, but when you see a fuel canopy and fuel pumps and people at the pumps, you're gonna stop. It makes a difference. You will not, I can assure you, uh, am I doing this, over the twenty-seven years I've been doing it? You cannot count the number of fuel stations in the United States with canopies behind the store. They don't exist, I can promise you. You may find one maybe in Vermont in the mountains, but it doesn't exist. It's, it's not economic model. Again, fuel, people see the fuel. Well, they look at the price sign, especially, I wanted, everyone knows I wanted a curb cut here on Route sixty-three. So if they look up at the gas sign, they say, well, is that really, where's the gas? And they can't see it from the building. You have a split second on that road to react. And when they drive by, I can assure you, they're not going to Walmart and turn that around.
I understand that.
So that, that's, that's the reasoning for it. Okay?
My second question is, that you're proposing, uh, when you moved your, your, your building down, you're proposing to put your picnic lane in the road right of way.
It will be on the right of way. Right through the property line.
Yeah.
Yep. And that was, again, my design of the county.
I guess the ZBA has to decide that, but that seems to me that creates a hazardous scenario across the road.
I think that right of way is enormous, right? I mean, for a future.
We have to look at the future.
We have to look at the future plan. But again. I was told to put it as close to Rumsey Road as possible, and that's what I did.
I mean, if you moved your building back to where it was, you could still put that picnic area in, either on, uh, above it or below it, regardless.
I could move it back and put green space there. You're a hundred percent right, but I was doing what I was asked to do by the county.
I understand that.
That's all, I mean, I'm kind of at a.
It's not a, I'm just trying to grasp and understand.
No, I, there could be some grass space in there. You're a hundred percent right. But again, for that sidewalk, and all I heard about during the county was walkability, walkability, pedestrian friendliness, this whole smart, smart.
And to clarify some of that, it, it's kind of two separate issues. And, you know, county planning board didn't have the quorum, so they didn't really meet to discuss, but, um, if you remember, the town, we had to come up with a concept, uh, full build-out development in order to meet the county's smart growth criteria. So that went back and forth between us and the county numerous, numerous times. And this is kind of the plan that we, um, you know, all determined that the requirements. So any of the developments that come into this potential area also have to meet that. Again, it's a concept, there's flexibility, um, but Christian and, and we in the county sat down and kind of went through that. So, it's just kind of the, the walkability in the, um, you know, the, as opposed to Route sixty-three being the, you know, front yard, so to speak, Rumsey Road with the mixed-use, um, concept development, made sense to, to bring it that way.
If you move the building.
But it was really geared around the water, being able to hook up to public water.
Right. If you move the building up a little, there's a little more sidewalk than usually put in. That's about it. We're not talking a mile worth of sidewalk here, so.
No, no.
Yeah, 'cause regardless, the sidewalk across is the driveway. So if you move it farther to the north, it doesn't really, doesn't really impact the longevity.
The cardboard store.
Right. Yeah, there's some room for, for space there. I'm not saying there's not, but again.
No, no, I.
Yeah, I was just doing what, move as close as possible, and that's what I did. And they asked for a picnic area, and I'm like, okay.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand.
I was trying, I've been trying to understand from the beginning too. Believe me.
Okay, this makes sure our engineer understands. Are you all set, Steve?
Well, yeah, I mean, we've got a lot of review left to go, but I think this was an update meeting and, um, you know, the change.
I want to make sure you guys were somewhat.
This is the feedback that we're all looking at.
I don't want to start spending, you know, twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars on a SWIP, you know, and design plans if it's not gonna, I have to start moving stuff eight to ten feet, because that significantly makes me do it all over again.
So the current flow of the water, Steve, is, north is, north is this way on, on, on what we have in front of us. So, is, are we, is the, is it going southeast or?
From this side, it'll go north, and then it's gotta go southeast from there. It comes essentially over between Walmart and Home Depot is where the water ends up.
So those two proposed stormwater detention ponds connecting to each other is feasible or not?
Oh, yeah. Oh, it was actually recommended, I guess. That's why we did, again, I just.
I was just asking.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just had a general comment on the berm, um, with the plantings on it. We've had a lot of solar projects with berms with plantings and all, you know, probably forty, fifty percent of the trees die off. So it's kind of a big maintenance issue, planting them on a berm, uh, especially with the drought summers. Is there any possibility of not putting them on a berm, maybe planting larger trees to begin with?
I defer to the church. I met with the church, and I, usually I told you guys before I do what the neighbors ask. And they wanted the berm with the trees.
How tall is the berm?
Uh, I think it's three feet. I believe it's three feet high. Yeah.
And that's, basically, it's just trying to save you guys from having to continue your place streets.
I know what he's trying to do, and I, I don't have a problem with that. The church had asked me for a berm and trees. I put a three-foot berm with four-foot trees, so it was seven feet. Uh, they didn't want a fence. They wanted natural trees. Would I do away with the berm today? Most definitely. Is it a pain? Yes, I have to mow it. I have to keep it up. I have to landscape it, which we do, uh, but you are correct. But again, that was something that I had told the church members, they had specifically asked for that, and I felt it very important that I give them what they asked for, because of my immediate neighbor. So, that's the only reason there is.
But I, but I think they're, they're looking for shading of the, of the property.
No, they're not.
More than, more than just a berm, that, that.
I was at the meeting where the ladies suggesting it, and the three ladies, they suggested it, don't know what they're talking about. I mow the yard. I just assume not have a berm.
That wasn't me.
I think, I think it's worth the conversation, just because you're gonna have a tree, tree die off, and you're not, it's not gonna do the visual that, that you guys.
The berm isn't gonna gain us.
I agree with you.
That much.
And they are four-foot of planting, which is, you know, you're not getting, you know, kind of make them five foot, sure, but four foot's a decent tree of planting. They'll fill in pretty quickly. Uh, I will finalize that with the church. I would ask for help and share with them, you know. To, I, listen, I would be all in favor of doing a berm.
I'm just looking, we have had numerous projects where we've done it, and they've had a lot die off.
I've done a few of them in the last couple of years, and I've.
It becomes a liability for you, so.
It costs me money. I'm not gonna say, I just did a bunch of stores this year. I got phone calls this spring saying.
I think we understand why the church wants it, and.
Okay, I can clarify that.
Maybe a, a taller tree with no berm, you know, that, that, that to us would make a lot more sense long-term. Because it'll, it'll last longer. I mean, they'll be planted, you know, correctly.
You're right, Paul. You know where the trees are now.
Yeah, yeah.
If we extended that past them, past all the way back to the Tractor Supply, that would be just as good to me as a berm.
We, we can't make them do that, though, in their project. But yeah, I mean, you know, that would be part of Tractor Supply.
I will talk to the church again. If I have to grab for a meeting, I'll do it again. But again, I was just going for what, we had ten, twelve people to meet.
The problem you have with taller trees right there is that sewer line, you can't put them anywhere real close to that.
Yeah, well, now there's enough room that we moved it to the south, that we, there's, right, in that ten-foot area where the berm is, ten foot is more than enough to center the trees. Definitely.
Oh, yeah.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah, I, I, I think that would be a good compromise, and I think that the, the church will be, will be happy, and it'll look better too, I think, long-term.
I agree.
We appreciate your willingness to cooperate with everyone. I think that's great to go back and talk to them.
Yeah, no, I'm sure.
And I have one more thing. The sidewalk that goes on to, off the property right of way, I'm sure, Steve, you're gonna look at that for, you know, what the town wants on, on the right of way.
And we made a request, you know, similar to the Benderson development, that, um, there's an agreement to put it in in the future if it's needed, um, as opposed to building it now.
Yep.
Which is, I just wanted to show my intent was, you know, we had stumbled to the property line. I've done that at several occasions as well.
Okay, Nikki Nelson? Well, thank you very much.
Okay, well, thank you, remember.
Yeah, we, that was a great presentation. It gives me a, a much better look. Um, have you thought anything about flowering trees? Have you gone down by the casino where the, the town?
I don't gamble.
Repaired the park road?
I have not.
You have not? You should. Just look and tell me later what you think.
Well, the flowers look nice now, because it's spring.
Pardon me?
The flowered trees look nice now, but it's spring. And tell, I, I have apple trees all in my yard, believe me. They're beautiful now, but then they go away.
Yeah, right now it's beautiful. I'd love to see it all over. But that's okay. Just an idea.
I don't want the deer, deer eat my trees. The deer will eat my apple trees.
You what?
The deer will eat my apple trees.
Oh.
Yeah. I'm a deer hunter, so I'd have to hunt there. I got a response where everything is, you know.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Steve, do you have anything, Dana?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go on to our zoning enforcement officers report.
I don't have too much to add. Um, I know Christian went over that fact that they submitted for the ZBA, so, um, that will be handled in the June meeting, not only for the county, but also. um, that will be handled in the June meeting, not only for the county, but also hopefully set up public hearing and meeting for the zoning board of appeals as well. And I believe you guys got forwarded the application for Manning Squires and Henning that we spoke about last meeting?
For what?
Manning Squires and Henning.
We have, we have seen it, but we can't do anything with it till our officials at the county.
Yep, yep, exactly.
You probably got that.
So, yeah, that, that has been added to the agenda for the county, and then it'll go back to you guys. But that's it for now.
Thank you. Steve, have you got anything for us? Whoops, sorry.
Okay.
Um, have you got anything for us?
Uh, just one thing, I guess. Uh, we issued a comment letter, um, for the biogas project. I'm not sure if Kathy's had a chance to distribute that to.
Yes, such a wonderful letter, outline and everything.
Yeah, so if anybody has any questions on it, and we put in there some proposed conditions to consider, um, and, you know, things that ultimately you have to consider as you review seek around the project, so. If there's any questions, you know, ahead of the next time it's on the agenda, just reach out to us.
Hey, thank you. Uh, on my report, I just want to remember, uh, remind you that the county's hosting, uh, the county housing need assessment program on, uh, 5/21, which is two weeks from today, at 4:00 PM at County Building 2. It will count as a training. You can go physically, or you can watch it on Zoom. And if you want to do that, I'll send you the link. It's 5/21 at, I, I'll send the whole thing to everyone again. I know it's hard to remember. Okay, um, I don't have too much for our next meeting yet, so you'll have to wait till you hear from me. Everything, uh, our next meeting will be the 21st, and we have two public hearings that night. Okay? And if they go as well as this, this was very, very, very good. So, anybody have anything to say?
Kathy, I'll be out.
Yes, I, I got you down. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Pa. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much for attending.